Let's pray. Our Father in Heaven, we are truly grateful for the day of life that you have given to each of us, grateful for the way that you watched over us and you've taken care of us. And Lord, we remember those in our country who are suffering because of tornadoes and the natural disasters. We pray, Lord, for your grace and your peace in their lives. We pray, Lord, for swift recovery, for the things that they need. I pray, Lord, that you would just grant them a special portion of your grace. And Lord, we remember those who lost loved ones during this time, supposed to be a happy time, Christmas and all that. I pray, Lord, that you would comfort hearts as they remember the loss of their loved ones during this time. Lord, I pray that you bless this meeting tonight. Help us, Lord, to always make wise decisions. And we pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
All right. First thing we'll have is roll call. Our city clerk, Ms. Pye Ar Wilson, will be making roll call.
Town of Vidalia Board of Alderman Roll Call for the regular meetings of the mayor and Board of Alderman, dated December 14th, 2021. Alderman Betts.
Present.
Alderman Woman Demby.
Present.
Alderman Gardner.
Yes.
Alderman Prots.
Here.
Alderman Smith.
Here.
Mayor, let's record show that a form of the board is present.
All right. Thank you very much. We have several minutes in front of you. Two of them are from our public meeting, and then two regular meetings. And is there any questions on any of these? Counsel, can we go ahead and accept those as a group, or do we need to do each one individually? Either way? Okay. What's the board's pleasure? Y'all want to do them all at one time?
Group.
Group? Okay. All right. Do I hear a motion to accept these minutes?
I'll make a motion.
Motion made by Alderman Smith, a second by Alderman Demby. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank y'all very much. Okay. We have public comments on our current agenda items. If there's something on the agenda for tonight that you have a question about, if you would, this be the time that you can comment. Is there anybody got any questions on any agenda items? Okay. We'll recognize Ms. Rob.
I'm going to say again, and I say this with every meeting, I don't feel it's appropriate to have comments at the beginning of the meeting because citizens can't possibly know what they're commenting on without hearing the discussion and the information. We're not privy to information if you're privy to. So it's hard for us to make ineffective public comments ahead of the issue. Okay. So of course I have some questions about our... And another thing, whenever I make public comment, nothing I ever ask is addressed. So that's one of the reasons that I wish that we could do it the way that we used to do it. Okay. So the wastewater treatment facility, I don't really know what to expect, except that we're supposed to upgrade. That's all it says, upgrade and expand. Obviously, you know my feelings about accepting industrial waste. And I would like to just state publicly that I don't think it's appropriate to accept industrial waste, especially from SIRA, because their discharge is CIC code 3624, I believe, carbon graphite, which is unregulated. And we've seen in the past that unregulated waste, if it becomes regulated later on and they discover, hey, you know, this is now a known carcinogen, then we don't want that liability falling... Well, we don't want any public health risk to our citizens, but we also don't want that falling on our city. Because if something like that happens, the city will be sued, not SIRA, because we're the ones that are allowing them to use our wastewater program. So I hope with these upgrades that the board will consider prayerfully the impact that unregulated industrial waste could have on our wastewater treatment and health benefits of citizens.
Ms. Rob, I don't want to interrupt you, but that particular issue, we're talking about the ITIP application tonight for SIRA. The issue, I mean, talking about SIRA, we've, you know, we have had meetings, public meetings, we've talked about these. We've talked at length about the discharge, the sewer discharge. The sewer discharge that we're making application for is through the BRIC program, which is strictly dealing with handling seepage water into our wastewater system, has nothing to do with SIRA. So if you have a question about the ITIP, that's on the agenda tonight, not anything else. So please.
Well, wastewater is on, and wastewater is pertinent if we're upgrading, but see, this is something, this is why I feel that it would be more appropriate to have discussion and then public comment, because, you know, all I knew was upgraded and expanded. I wasn't privy to any information about what we're doing. But again, wastewater and what the wastewater treatment plant is accepting is relevant to its upgrades, because you're going to have to take all of that into account.
Okay.
But I am glad to hear this.
And I will be glad anytime. If you have any questions on the agenda, I'd be glad to discuss with you at length, prior to any meeting, any questions you might have. Because we do have to limit public comment to a certain amount of time, because we have other business to attend, and we try to keep just to the agenda item. But I'll be glad to discuss any item that you have, that you want to be discussed fully. I'll be glad to visit with you, just like clearing up the wastewater, what the application was for the wastewater.
And for tonight, for your ITIP exemption for SIRA, will that be 100% exemption? And how will that work? Because I did the last time, it said, you know, you had to hire an 80% from the parish to get the ITIP. If I'm correct, I may be remembering that.
They followed within the bounds of what was set forth in the ITIP. This one is an 80% exemption, not 100%. They changed that, which we might discuss later on in a meeting, that we'll talk about that. But they're investing $137 million in our town, and I think that's something that we are certainly excited for them to do, and the jobs they're going to be having are very good-paying jobs, and will be way more than that. And they want to make sure they have the best workforce they can get, and I'm sure they will. And we're excited for them, so.
Well, it's a big investment to their plan, $137 million, that's for sure. So with a big expansion, you know, it causes a lot of concern, but hopefully, you guys, you said, you know, the last time during the public hearing, that we could have a public hearing with L D Q involved, and I hope that we will afford that.
Okay. Anybody else? Anybody got any other questions? All right. Let's move on. The first thing we have is a presentation of financial statements for October 2021 by Ms. Deborah Moke, our CPA.
I just want the record to reflect that Alderman Gardner is present.
Yes. Thank you.
Tonight's financial statements include the balance sheet as of October 31st, 2021, the statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balances for the four months ending October 31st, 2021, a summary budget to actual comparison by fund, and a detailed budget to actual comparison by department. These financial statements have been distributed to all departments and Aldermen for their review. In summary, the town has combined cash in the bank of $10.7 million, included restrictive funds of $8 million in the hydro fund and $1 million in the sales tax fund, investments of $4.6 million, including the hydro reserve fund of $2.4 million, $1.5 million in the general fund, and $705,000 of ARPA funds. Total assets are $43.4 million, total liabilities are $12.3 million, the fund balance, combined fund balance is $31.1 million. The statement of revenues, expenses, and changes in fund balance for the four months ending October 31st indicates combined revenues of $12 million, total expenditures of $12.9 million, for a change in net position of a negative $915,000. Revenues are running slightly under budget, at 26% of budget, due to timing of revenue collection and lower-than-expected hydro royalties for the four months of the fiscal year. Sales tax collections remain higher than the same period last year. We do anticipate the hydro royalties to catch up with the increase in production due to the rise in Mississippi River levels and with the largest increase in royalty rebates beginning in January. Total expenses at 35% are slightly over budget. Personnel costs are at the current budget levels, however, materials and supplies and other services are higher than budget. We are seeing increases in utility revenues due to the higher energy costs we are experiencing. This is a nationwide problem. Electricity and gas are expected to be hired in the winter months, but these higher rates will help reduce the town's higher energy cost as well. We have borrowed $4.1 million on the transmission line and substation to date to cover materials, engineering costs, legal fees incurred on securing portions of the right-of-ways from the landowners. The project began in June of 2020. The Vidalia Beautification Committee and Vidalia Garden Club have been busy working around the old Courthouse Square and at the Convention Center. The new Christmas lights and landscaping have been paid for with hydro loyalty funds approved by the council. They will start back up after the New Year with additional plans to enhance Vidalia. Hydro rebates approved in the amount of $2.5 million are included in these financial statements. This year, the rebates were mailed in mid-November before Thanksgiving. We were advised by LLA, Louisiana Legislative Auditors, that we should have an ordinance in place stating how the rebates will be paid to the customers. This is a topic of tonight's meeting. We are still working with FEMA to cover emergency work and debris removal costs caused by the 2021 winter storm. The town is expecting to receive $267,500 in reimbursement. Everything has been submitted for category B, which is emergency preparedness, and we are working on the remaining projects. This is a major undertaking by town employees working with FEMA to meet all the requirements, and it takes bi-weekly cost with FEMA and a lot of data to get this funding. The town has received approximately $705,000 of the $1.4 million allocated to the town from the American Rescue Plan Act. This money showed up in the September financial statements. The remaining $705,000 will be sent the following year. This money has been deposited into a certificate of deposit at Delta Bank. Eligible uses include responding to the public health emergency, negative economic impacts, revenue loss due to COVID-19 public health emergency, provide premium pay to eligible workers, and make necessary investments in water, sewer, or broadband infrastructure. We are in the process of applying for the Water Sector Program to update sewer lines in town. We are hopeful we can get the approval from the state, and with the approval of the council, we will want to use a portion of the ARPA money for the 25% match. The auditors have completed their fieldwork and are now working on their report, which must be submitted by December 31st, 2021.
Okay. Any questions, Ms. Moke, from the council? Okay. Thank you, Deborah. Appreciate the work you do. And she's right, the work that they do, putting in, dealing with these FEMA regulations to get money and get a check from them is pretty exhausting. I mean, it's pretty exhausting, and they meet on a regular basis. And a lot of times hash out the same thing over and over, don't you? So it's pretty stringent. Okay. Number two on our agenda is board discussion and vote on approval of occupational license applications. First one we have, and the only one we have tonight, is Tress Solutions Clinical Salon, Ms. Suzanne Branch. Is she here? Ms. Branch here? She's not here? It says, "This is a salon that specializes in hairdressing, grooming, and hair growth services." We want... Brian, quit rubbing your head out there. So do I hear a motion to approve this application?
I'll make a motion.
Motion made by Alderman Smith.
I'll second.
Seconded by Alderman Betts. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Okay. Number three is the presentation of plans for proposed project to upgrade and expand the Town of Vidalia Water Plant. We have with us Mr. Doug Wimberly. He's with Neil Schaefer, Inc. He has done a lot of the... I'm going to let him address what he worked, he's done, and what we're working to get to. So, Mr. Wimberly?
Good evening. I appreciate y'all inviting me here tonight to present to you where we are in this project. It's probably about a year ago Heather Malone contacted me and told me that y'all were looking at doubling the size of your water plant to be able to... It was more of a industry recruitment thing at the time, but then we went through the freeze of last year, and everybody saw the importance of having this additional water treatment capacity. And so we got under contract with the town to basically develop a set of plans along with a cost estimate for additions to the plant, to be able to double the capacity, and have those plans and cost estimates, everything, ready to take, to go before the legislature, to get the funding to be able to do the project. At that time, nobody knew how much it would cost. We were just kind of guessing at what the cost would be. So the first step of that was developing a conceptual design and bringing that before the town for y'all's approval, before we moved into detailed design. So what we're going to be presenting tonight is the conceptual design. Can we go to the... Who's got control? Can we go to the design plan, the footprint first? There we go. And I believe y'all have paper copies of this in front of you. Right now, the plant consists of a single line. The water from the wells comes in to the plant, goes through an aerator, then goes through a clarifier. Out of the clarifier, where we're adding some chemicals and stuff to drop the iron out of the water, from there it goes into three sand filters. Out of the sand filters, it goes into a clear well, and is pumped out of the clear well through some ion exchangers. The ion exchangers are what removes the hardness from the water. And past that point, the water goes into the tank and ready for distribution. When the plant was originally built, it was designed and built to be able to double in size. And so it's most of the piping and stuff associated with the filters, if you look at it, it's got a bunch of blind flanges up there where they could pipe out and run to a new set of filters right parallel to that. And so that's what we're proposing to do here. Our original preliminary design has two clarifiers. One of them will replace the one that you have there now. The existing clarifier is 70 years old, so it has lived its life, it has served its purpose. And so the sequence of construction, the planned sequence of construction would be to install the first clarifier with its aerator, install the new line of sand filters, which you see off to the left, install the new line of ion exchangers, the new transfer pumps, get that plant up and running and proven that we can run it, and then shut the old half down, remove the existing clarifier, the 70-year-old clarifier, put in a new one there. We take the existing aerator off of it, because it was installed in 2000, and it's still in pretty good shape. Refurbish some of it, install it on this new clarifier, rework the sand filters, and then put the whole thing back online, basically doubling the capacity of your plant. The cost estimate for that came in at $8.3 million. So we went back to see what we might do to reduce that cost, and the one thing we were able to do is, well, rather than putting in two clarifiers and a new aerator and a rebuilt aerator, is just put in one big clarifier with one big aerator and tear out the old clarifier, and then do the rest of the plant as already described. The cost estimate for that was $7.2 million. The pros of the first concept we developed is that it does provide you basically two independent plants, such that if something happened to one, you can still run on the other. We even duplicated that all through the new electrical system, such if we lost one half of the electrical, we can still run the other half. So you've got two basically isolated plants there running. You've got some duplicity in case you had a problem. You can take half of the plant down and do maintenance while still running on the other half. That's the advantage of the higher-cost alternative, the $8.3 million. The $7.2 million, you're tied into one clarifier, one aerator. If anything happens to that, you're down. But that's the only real con to that approach. So we've presented these to Cornell and to the mayor, and have discussed it with them. They have their opinions on which way they want to go. To me, one is as good as the other. I do believe that the first concept, the $8.3 million concept, where you have two independent plants, does provide you a whole lot of flexibility and backup. And, you know, we saw during the freeze that we had where, gee whiz, we wish we had another one of these, or we wish we could take this offline for a minute, you know, or for an hour, for a day, to work on it, and we just couldn't do that. This provides that duplication where you'd be able to do that type of work.
Another thing that Doug's got in this, y'all, as far as cost, is security. One of the things I'm really concerned about, especially in the future, is we want to make sure we can secure... I want this to be Fort Knox. Somebody comes in and out, it's going to be, you're going to have to have some kind of security clearance to go in that water plant. And that's not the case we have now. And that's something else that will be certainly included in this process, is a redoing of that whole area down there around the water plant, securing it, and I think that's important. But like Doug said, we did talk at length. We felt like the two systems would be better. It's a little more expensive, but you have... Now, I've heard the word redundancy. If something does happen with one plant, you certainly won't be shut down completely if something goes wrong in it. So I would like the council to... We're bringing this to you tonight to get your blessing on continuing, because right now, there's monies available. We've talked at length. You know, this is, some of this money will be going, using state capital outlay, so we have, we've pulled in Brian Hammond and Associates and Michelle. They are very well-versed at making sure all these monies are turned in and timely, and all the payment processings are done, and they will be involved as well in the construction, during the construction phase of it. And they're here tonight to... And they've talked, they visited with Doug, and I think he's certainly okay with that. But we want to make sure that everything's handled, so we can get the funds that we need to from the state. And otherwise, there's other programs out there, monies that we'll be going after as well, which they will help us make the applications for, to get everything we can helped paid for by whether it's federal or, you know, state funds. So anyway.
Do you mind if I ask a couple more questions that are more relevant to the water?
Okay. That's okay.
I just have a couple.
Yeah.
They're easy questions. I just have, will the new water plant help with, I heard you address the hardness of the water. Will we see a difference in the hard water buildup that we experience in Vidalia now with this new? Okay. And the other, will it help the strong corities that I know I have in my house, sometimes worse than others, help that? How will it affect citizens during construction? Like, what will... Because it'll be two different buildings, we won't see any...
You won't see any interruption. That was, you know, we'll be building a whole new plant, cranking it up, running it parallel to the existing plant, making sure everything's good, and then we'll shut the old plant down and make the renovations to the old plant.
How long will it take to construct, do you think?
Probably 18 months to two years.
Perfect. Thank you. Appreciate that. I did make an extra time.
Yeah. And as the mayor mentioned, Brian and I have talked, and we've agreed that probably the best move forward is once we... So the step we're at now is we've just finished this conceptual design, and we needed to get your agreement on which way we went before we moved into detailed design. So that's kind of what we're here for tonight. Once we finish the detailed design, which is probably six to eight months out, then we would develop a package to put out on the street for bids. And at that point, Brian would become involved and handle the construction management of the project. We would have some construction oversight during that period. Being the engineer of record, we would have to certify that the thing got built per the plans and specs to the Department of Health and that type of thing. So that would, that would kind of be our involvement at that point.
Okay. Any questions from council? You know, this is something that's been needed. Like you said, that clarifier is 70 years old, and it's been a good plant. And I think, I've been drinking Vidalia water all my life, and I'm still alive. I'm 62, so I'm not...
There's worse water.
Yeah. But anyway, does anybody have any questions?
You need a vote?
I would like a vote from the council for us to move on, like you said, into the design phase. Now, keep in mind, these are post-COVID numbers, probably prior to COVID. Doug, what would you say that increased this plant to be? How much? What percent?
Well, we say post-COVID. I mean, we got these cost estimates post-COVID, so... But what we are seeing now is stuff like pumps and motors and anything mechanical. It's just taken forever to get. So that's the reason why it's a little difficult to answer how long the construction period would take. We don't know how some of that's going to play out. I heard tonight on the radio, coming over here, that Omicron is running across countries like wildfire now, so everybody's going to be kind of ducking and covering again from that. So any estimates so far as construction time and that type of thing are kind of up into the air at this point. But I do think we've already got some of the COVID cost, you know, because we did see a big jump in what things cost. I think we've already got it covered in here. We also, you'll notice that at this stage where we're at with conceptual design, we're at a 20% contingency, which you say, well, that's pretty high. Well, that's because we're just at conceptual. We've not done any real detail work yet. As we work through the detailed design and come up with a final design, we'll have a final cost estimate. It'll be much more refined. We'll probably be down to a 5% contingency then. But I didn't want to cut corners too much at this point and then have to come back to you at a later time and say, oops, you know, we said it's seven, and now it's 10, or whatever.
Okay. One thing to keep in mind, counsel, is that we're going to go ahead and get the design and go through the design phase, and then at that point, you know, you put it out for bid. You have the ability to reject bids if it's just what you think is too much and so forth. But we do need to have some kind of direction from council to go ahead and authorize us to go ahead and engage them to go into the detailed design.
I'll make the motion that we engage them and do it with the two plant.
Yeah. I guess, is everybody okay with the two plant?
The two plant.
The two plant? Everybody okay with that?
Yeah. I'll second this.
Okay. Motion made by Alderman Betts to go with plan number one, Doug, that you had, seconded by Alderman Smith. Let's do a roll call vote on that, please.
Motion made by Alderman Betts to adjourn with the two plant. As presented, stated by Alderman Smith, Alderman Betts.
Yes.
Alderman Demby.
Yes.
Alderman Gardner.
Yes.
Alderman Prots.
Yes.
Alderman Smith.
Yes.
Okay. All right, Doug. Get to work.
Yeah.
Thank y'all a bunch. Really appreciate that. Okay. Next thing we got is board discussion and vote on resolution authorizing the mayor to sign a letter of intent supporting the SIRA technologies pending ITIP application. We've had, I think almost everyone up here has had an opportunity to tour the plant. We have had several meetings, and I can say that from the get-go, everything that this company said they were going to do, they've done it. To get the exemption, they have to have all the local political subdivisions vote to approve, to grant them the exemption. The Sheriff Department has already approved it, the school board's already approved it, and the police jury last night unanimously approved this, the ITIP application. Does anybody have any questions on the council? Or does somebody ready to make a motion to grant the ITIP?
I'll make a motion to grant the ITIP.
Motion made by Alderman Betts, seconded by Alderman Gardner. Let's do a roll call vote on that as well.
Motion made by Alderman Betts to adjourn with the two plant. As presented, stated by Alderman. Alderman. Yes.
Alderman Demby.
Yes.
Alderman Gardner.
Yes.
Alderman Prots.
Yes.
Alderman Smith.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. Paul, thank you again, you and your company, for the work y'all have done and what you're going to be doing, and we're excited for the work that y'all have done already. And by the way, they're already doing business with 80 vendors, local vendors, doing business with that many people. 60? I'm sorry.
I appreciate it, David. You're just on top of it.
It's going to be at least 80, though. By the time this would help with it. But anyway, again, thank y'all very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you all for your support.
Okay. All right. Next thing we have is a board discussion and vote to adopt the compliance questionnaire for audits as required by the Louisiana Legislative Auditor. You have that in your packet, and basically, once we approve this, which we should, I mean, it's just a questionnaire that our CPA filled out, what we'll be doing... mean, it's just a questionnaire that our CPA filled out, what we'll be doing, I will be passing something y'all have to sign acknowledging, you know, this. So I will be, if I hand you something, that's just acknowledging the questionnaire that you've seen it and that you've looked over it. So is any questions on this?
Can you make a change on it? This boy's phone number is concerned.
Oh, what, what, Ms. Dembie said, can we make a change as far as phone numbers on it, Deborah?
They get your phone number wrong.
Is it?
No, it's not wrong. It's just my house phone, and I'm never there. I'm going to give them myself. Yeah, you can do that.
Okay. So we can do that. Ms. Dembie, so do I hear a motion that we accept this, adopt the compliance questionnaire?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Alderman Best. Second by Alderman Probst. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, I'm going to pass this down. Today is the 14th. And as they sign that, we will, I'm going to go ahead and let, let's see, Doug, you're here. We're going, introduction of an ordinance to authorize the town of Adalia to change the procedure for charging and collecting fees for the use and operation of the town of Adalia Municipal Ambulance Service. What this is doing is getting us into compliance with some of the changes that have been made in the law, dealing with the ambulances. And, and this is verbiage, it's not changing anything other than the ordinance is going to bring us into compliance with how things are collected. And if you have any questions on that, Doug and Jay are pretty well versed at, you know, good thinking, with what's going on with that. Is any questions from the council? Again, this is just an introduction, there's no action to be taken, but if you had any questions, you know, you certainly ask those now, but it is the introduction. Okay, moving on to number seven. Board discussion vote to appoint Buzz Craft as director and Jay LaShawna as an alternate director of the Louisiana Municipal Natural Gas Association. You know, we're a member of that association, and that's required for council to, you know, establish who the director is. The mayor's are automatically the director, and then they have to have an assistant in case I'm not able to go, and that can be anyone that's an employee of the town. So can I hear a motion that we vote to appoint myself and Jay as the alternate director for the LMGA?
I'll make the motion.
Motion made by Alderman Smith, I hear second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Best. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thanks. Okay. Board discussion vote on approval of a day of police department personnel, Mr. Carson Cupid as a new part-time officer. If anybody has any questions, Frankie's here. Any questions?
Did we lose someone? Did we lose our employee?
Yes, we did. We're losing an investigator.
Okay. So that's the position that they will be going, filling in for?
Not, not this particular employee, but we will be filling that slot with another employee on the street, and he'll be taking that, just part-time.
Here you go.
Okay, do I hear a motion to accept?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Alderman Best, I hear second?
I'll say.
Second by Alderman Smith. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, none opposed. All right. Next thing we have is presentation of requests to honor former town employee, Mr. Dan White, and it's Ms. Sandra White. I saw Ms. Sandra come in. Sandra, would you like to?
So number one, hi, or hi, all of you members. I just drove in. But essentially, I don't have a presentation. In July, I asked Catherine, because I couldn't be here, I want the city of Adalia, since my father was a longtime employee, and he was a subject matter expert in Public Works and Engineering Department for the city of Adalia, to consider naming something in Public Works after my father. So I thought, wow, I heard him do his presentation, I came in on the telephone, this presentation of the water treatment plant. I remember going to the water treatment plant that was downtown as a kid with my father. I had no clue what he did. I just remember these huge tanks. But at the end of the day, the reason I'm here today is because in July I couldn't make it, I just finished final exams because I'm a college professor, and this is the only time I can come, because when I'm in January, I go back to work, and you meet on Tuesdays, and I'm a five-hour drive from Houston. So I'm asking the board to consider, since you all are doing some type of water improvement plant, to consider naming something after my father. I don't know, do they have stations, pumps, lines? I have no idea. I'm not a plumber. I don't understand it. I know a little, like changing things on a toilet. But my father loved the city of Adalia. He was a very committed member to the city of Adalia, infrastructure of the plumbing. And of course, things have changed so much since then. When my father was here with the city of Adalia, they would grab him off the fishing banks because they needed a problem resolved. Well, now, as we all know, times have changed, and we have people now that are subject matter experts who train, train the trainers, so other people will have knowledge and skills that if that person's not around, someone else can pick up the ball and keep running. And I just wanted to ask the city of Adalia to consider naming something in the PWE department after my father.
Okay. All right. Well, Ms. White, thank you for, for what you do as far as being a teacher, that's admirable. You might not think that is, but it is.
Thank you, I never thought I'd.
But what I would like to do is, we did want you to have the opportunity to do that, and what we will do is put on the, we will look and see what it takes to do things like that. We've not done any of that since I've been in office since 2016, but there are people who are very worthy to have things maybe, or just recognize them. If you see anything, just recognize them, have a day or a proclamation to do that. We've had several people pass here recently, Ms. Carrie Lyles, Mr. Frank Warner, who passed away recently, who have been, have big impacts on our, on our community, that we'd like to do something for all these people. But we will certainly get together and maybe as, as a group, see what we can do, what's what we can do legally to, to name something or have a special recognition for those.
Okay.
Okay.
And I thought PW was perfect because he was, you know, like I said, a subject matter expert, and things have changed a lot since then, so.
Okay. Well, thank you so much. We appreciate it. And I knew Dan well, yes, he loved to fish.
He did love to fish. He also loved being a plumber as well.
Yeah, and he was good.
Okay, thank you.
Well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. Number 10, we have is discussion on the need for new ordinance to govern how future utility rebates will be dispersed to electric users. Let me set the table. This has nothing to do with 588, which governs our hydroelectric plant. What this has to do with the monies that we're now rebating to citizens, it's brought up a new set of challenges that there's nothing in that ordinance that addresses, hey, what, you know, that gives us guidelines to how we're going to disperse these funds. For example, let's say, you know, right now it says if somebody owes the town any money, it does say that in the ordinance, you can offset that, and they would get the difference, okay? Because this year, most of those rebates were around 47% of their electricity costs, they got rebated to them this year in a check. And if somebody had an electricity bill, and let's say they had just an arrears, a late fee of $10, and that was due and it hadn't been paid, and their check was $1,500, guess what? That check was credited to their account in its entirety. And it delayed them getting their check for a long time till, you know, they could be investigated to see what that offset should have been and was, and so forth. And, and also establish some guidelines. What's delinquent? What's considered delinquent? 10 days, 20 days, 30 days? You know, these are some of the parameters we need to address as a council to make sure we get it right and it's legal. Another issue that has came up that wasn't around back in those days was there are, there's government programs now where people can get assistance throughout the year through laheep or whatever else they can get. Well, and we've contacted the legislative auditor on how to do that, and we haven't got a final ruling on that, but there are some people, by the time we got a laheep and their, their rebate check, they didn't pay anything for electricity this year. So we got to make sure we handle the accounting of that right, and that's why we want to discuss these things, and we'll be asking y'all more to think about those as we come up with trying to set parameters on. Let's establish what delinquency is. 10 days, one day, 20 days, 30 days. Establishing how we're going to handle the difference, you know, or if somebody's habitually passed due that never gets current on their bill, you know, these people might tend to get worse now since they know, I got this money coming, I'm just not going to pay my bill. You know, there's, there's so many, and it's so varied how many different scenarios turn out on these checks, you have no idea. After 2,000 something checks, the different scenarios we have to deal with. And we just want to design an ordinance that'll help us and citizens to know exactly, hey, if I'm, I need a check on my, if I want my check, I better make sure I don't have any kind of balance due, because that check can automatically be credited to your account, and it could delay you getting your check by three to, three weeks to four weeks. So any questions from council?
I would just say that I would like to be a part of that decision-making and coming up with the ruling regulations for that, because I know that I've received several volumes of calls from people in and out of my district pertaining to, who fell in those categories of having additional balance left over once their reas was satisfied. So I would like to be a part of the decision-making on that.
The whole, the whole council will be, you know, be involved in that decision. We'll be, we're going to try to come up and establish, you know, what all needs to be addressed, and we'll handle it in a meeting itself on what, you know, and y'all can either tweak it any way you want to, and y'all will do it as a group. But in that meantime, we're going to try to get a good ruling on, from the legislative auditor, on what, you know, we have to do with those monies. If anybody receives any kind of government assistance, does it affect it at all? Because right now, the ordinance says, it's not based on what they paid, it's based on their consumption. And that's how the ordinance is paid. So, I mean, the rebate's paid. It doesn't matter, they, by, by the ordinance, they could not pay their bill, but because they consumed it, they would get a rebate check. Of course, it would offset any delinquencies they have. So there's a lot of things, we just want to make y'all aware of it. And again, this doesn't affect ordinance 588 of the hydro royalty at all. So we'll be bringing that to you as more. And again, that was just for discussion. Okay. Any questions on that as we go forward with it?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Uh huh. How you doing, Ms. Banks?
I'm fine.
Good.
I'm kind of, if you have ordinance in place for a husband who's deceased, and the wife has been paying that bill for like 12, 15 years, that, that she could receive that rebate check without going through a lot of changes to get it?
This, this year, and Ms. Banks, that's a, that's a real good question, and we've run into that a lot, you know, and we're, we're a small town. And what we've asked those, those surviving widows to do is bring a death certificate of their spouse. You know, my mom, my dad died this year, you know, she needs to get my dad off the account. And we're just asking people to bring in a death certificate. We know you've been paying that bill, and yeah, we, so we can make those adjustments. But we do have to get a death certificate showing that, and that's just for future use in case something, what were to happen to you, then, you know, we have our paperwork on how that transpired, so.
Well, I brought in a death certificate and also mortgage with my name on that and everything, and I still had some problems receiving that check. So I'm wondering if something could be worked out. And then what, what is the ordinance for trying to get the utility bill changed over out of the deceased spouse's name into the surviving spouse's name?
Well, that's, that's what Jay.
We've been, Ms. Banks, that's a good question, as the mayor said. I've talked to our legal counsel, who helps us specifically with utility questions, and they're actually researching that right now, and, you know, it really hunkered on the town. And, you know, I know sometimes people think they would kind of be hard information to need to try to work with everybody, but there is, there are legal ramifications in the town doesn't get the paperwork we need to change. Because a lot of times, we do know people, but other times, people aren't familiar with certain situations, accounts can get changed, and it might not be the way we know it, or it's, you know, drawn to us. So we have to, so they're working right now with us to try to come up with some standard for typically, in like in your instance, and I think I saw your paperwork, and I think, about the topic, I think, all that paperwork, we're going to get changed, because we had all the documentation that they told us to that point we need. So we are trying to work, make it as easy as we can for our customers, but at the same time, getting us the paperwork we need to keep us in clear too.
And Ms. Banks, for example, your, your, your solution is pretty obvious, but what about someone who has children, it's a community property state? Well, if they get a big rebate check, $2,000, and, you know, honestly, in Louisiana, if it's not been any kind of will, those children entitled to half of that check. So you can see, again, in your case, it's not that case, but we have to be very careful and know why we need to say, but it's something we need to address, and you're absolutely right.
So in the meantime, we just continue the way it is each year if we continue to get the rebate checks? You already have paperwork on file for me supposedly.
You're, you're good. You're good.
They're fine.
Your, your account got changed over?
Oh, okay.
So you're, you're good to go?
Thank you.
So my, my question would be, the survivor, the survivor would not have to pay a redeposit or anything?
No. No, not that. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Banks.
Thank you.
All right. Number 11, is board discussion vote on the 2022 beer and liquor permits? Those are in your packet. You want to look at those? Has anybody got any questions? Do I hear a motion we accept these applications? Or permits? Motion made by Alderman Gardner, I hear second? Second by Alderman Probst. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
I see it's one that, y'all have not received the permit for, and I have not received liquor and beer permit for. So what's normally, once you have not received, what's the format of that?
I think that Mr. Stax has been by there seven times, he hasn't gotten any word from him on if they're going to continue to sell. Now that's the first year, so that's where that's.
It may be a discontinuation. Okay.
And I suppose the manager of the school, and, and.
Yeah.
Of course.
The, and they, we collect for several, and other, we're just now getting them. We got, we got some in the mail today. So they're probably in the mail somewhere. They're, they're a pretty good corporate citizen, and they do, do try to keep things up. But like I said, it's probably in the mail, because we just got some today for some other jurisdictions. And of course, it was too late to get them to, most of the municipalities are meeting on the second Tuesday, so they'll have to wait until January 1st to actually be approved.
I've never heard that for us in the mail. I didn't understand that when we took all the rebate checks to the post office, you know what they did with them? They sent them to Shreveport? Is that correct?
Right.
They sent them all to Shreveport.
Unless you tell them.
No, they goes to Shreve, they go to Shreveport.
In town.
But anyway, so that's when some people didn't get them Saturday, and I said, we took them to the post office Thursday, you should have them, you know, maybe Saturday is the latest. It was, and it was the next Monday, so. All right. Update on streets and sidewalk projects. Today, the work started on the sidewalks, started on Myrtle Street. We only had one bid, it was turned in. Company Chris Cothran has started, and they are going, what they're going to do is, they've got down most of Myrtle Street, they're going to frame up 150 feet worth of sidewalk, so when they pour, they can have one truck come in six yards and pour them all at one time, and then move on to the next section. So they are working, and they're going to go all over town, and we will be addressing any new spots that we might have missed coming up. Next year, I would like for us to look at, there's a lot of people who have, back when they put, filled in all the ditches, their, their driveway was put in gravel instead of concrete from the road and connecting to the concrete at their house, and it was just left in gravel, and that's something we need to look at. Lee, we identified how many?
Two hundred and seventy-six.
Two hundred and seventy-six driveways like that.
Well, that was a choice.
It was a choice?
That was a choice. That was a choice. When they started filling in the, the ditches and I, they, they gave you a choice. The city would do the work, you just had to pay for the concrete.
Oh.
And so there were some people who chose not, not to do concrete.
Project, whatever they had there before, if we put back, if they had white rock there, we put white.
Right.
If they had gravel, we put gravel, if they had concrete, we put concrete.
If they chose not, well, like in my case, I didn't have, I had rock, so I said, yeah, I want, I want concrete, so I paid for the concrete, which was, I think, the smart thing to do.
Okay. Anyway, we will be, we will be addressing that, and if you, and as far as the street, the company TL James will be starting after first of the year. Diamond B has got their asphalt mill shut down for right now, where they're going to get their asphalt, so starting after the first of the year, you'll start seeing the milling of Miranda and Simonton, and we're ongoing right now identifying the streets that's going to get the next overlay. And I know for sure, I know Front Lee is on that list, Front Lee Street, and street over by the Vadaia Cemetery, is that Dotson? Dotson? And there's a few other spots, and we're going, we're going to go as far as the money